Good evening. Welcome, everybody. It's Salina County Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. First of all, I want to thank Vice Chairman for covering for me last year, or last week.
Last month.
Last month. I told you my calendar is off it.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Is that how you plan it?
No, I didn't plan it that way, but thanks for covering. Did a great job, for sure. Approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded that we approve the agenda for the August 27th, 2024 meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 23rd, 2024 meeting. Any discussion, any changes? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes.
Seconded.
It's improperly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the July 23rd, 2024 meeting as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I will turn it over to staff for the conditional use permit 24-02.
Okay, this is a request. The owner of the property is Dream Team LLC, Jason Ingermanson. Existing land use is agricultural. The proposed land use is a commercial and recreational sporting clays range. The comprehensive plan, this parcel is zoned agricultural and located within the suburban residential designation of the Salina Urban Service Area. The applicant is proposing this sporting clays facility to be open to the public. The facility would provide opportunities for competitive sporting clay events. The proposed use is located adjacent to a residentially zoned area currently occupied by a cemetery. Public comments, staff has received concerns from the residents of the area regarding the proposed use specifically, noise and safety concerns. Staff has also received concerns from the caretakers of the cemetery near the site. Comments from other departments and agencies. I did consult with the sheriff's department, which stated that they had no issues with the use itself, but such activity may result in an increase in complaint calls and response to the site by the department. Under your review criteria, item one, the location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed development will be compatible with and will not adversely affect the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties in the surrounding neighborhood. This site is located within the city of Salina's urban service area, within a part designated as the suburban residential. This lot is also located within the floodplain. There is currently no commercial type activity within the immediate vicinity of this parcel. And the use proposed, while it may be recreational, is also commercial in nature and may not be compatible with adjacent residential uses. The east property line of the site is shared with the several lots of the Lonergan addition. However, the lots are not used for residential structures, but do house the cemetery. Item two, with the exception of the two existing industrial zoned lots located north of the subject parcel on Country Club Road, the predominant land surrounding the proposed use is both residential, and I also meant to mark that that's also agricultural. Item three, while it is true, the recreational facilities, such as what the applicant is proposing, could enhance the community. The location of this parcel relative to adjacent residential uses may also increase the possibility of incidents requiring the use of county resources. Staff's recommendation, staff is unable to recommend approval based on the findings listed above. However, should the planning commission approve this application, the following conditions are strongly advised. Applicant must construct a bathroom facilities for, to accommodate the public, which meet requirements of the adopted commercial and environmental codes. Commercial permit review through the city is required. Septic system must meet current county requirements. Any structures must be elevated with the finished floor two feet above the base flood elevation. Approval from the state of Kansas Division of Water Resources for the project, including any fill dirt used to elevate the structures. Applicant may need to be served by city or rural water. Submittal of a full site plan indicating drainage and public parking with any other public facilities. All structures shown on the plan must indicate that they will be elevated per floodplain development requirements. Eight-foot privacy fence with additional landscape buffering for sound dampening around the designated area for the shooting range. Your alternatives would be to either approve the request with the conditions as listed above, conditionally approve the request with other conditions the commission may deem necessary, or deny the request. I believe the applicant or the applicant's representative is present. If so, come forward.
Good evening. I'll start just from a clarity standpoint. My name's Chris Nickel. I'm JRI Vice President and Operating Partner. Our intentions with this shooting facility or sporting clay is primarily to do pop-up events, so may not have been fully clear on that application, but our intention and our vision is to host 12 to 16 events annually at this time. Part of that is, is to support the growth of the sport and to provide a new recreational activity in Salina, but also to understand the demand that Salina can bring. Obviously, regionally, we're located in a very heavily hunting and shooting area, along with multiple of the educational systems supporting the sport. Between here, all the way out to Fort Hayes, we've had a range of inquiries. So, our goal is to understand what type of demand over the next year that we can harbor, in terms of looking forward to potentially doing something larger in possibly this location or a different location. That's all I got for now, unless you got questions.
Sit tight. I'll bring it back to the commission. Fire away. Questions?
I've got a question for Tim first. Septic systems aren't allowed in a floodplain. Am I not correct?
The tanks have to be elevated. The laterals can be, but the tanks have to be elevated.
We had intended on using porta-potties for this. For each session, there would be roughly 40 to 50 shooters. There could be two to three sessions in a day, so.
You are making this a commercial activity, though?
Correct.
Okay.
No understanding we're only going to be open 12 or 16 days out of the year?
Potentially, yes.
Is that what you're saying?
That's our intention.
It's not open to the public every Saturday to come out and shoot?
No, sir. They would be event-related, so.
Event-related only, okay.
The length, the duration of three-session shoots would probably be between three and five hours.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying that.
I assume you're looking at weekends, then, right?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Comment. I drove out there this afternoon. It's only about half a mile from our house, and it's very close to Holiday Resort. Have you, has there been any type of study on the noise that would come forth because of these events and what effect it might have on the nursing home?
Yeah. Not as much the nursing home, but we have done field studies just ourselves, gone out and shot and stand in different proximities to the location. Truthfully, it all depends on kind of the weather and the wind. So if the wind, in some cases, was going northeast, you'd hear it in different areas. It is a heavily tree-lined area, so there was areas that you would think that you could hear it, but you couldn't hear anything. So, it was a little bit of everything. Mother Nature played a role in that, but it wasn't overwhelmingly loud. What you could hear at the same time was the cars driving in Crawford from the locations of the shooting areas. In terms of the cemetery there, we did meet with Father Keith of the diocese, in terms of just how that communication would work, and he, at that point, he didn't have any concerns, as long as we had open lines of communication and scheduling events.
With it being in such a residential area, so with the proximity to Salina, why did you guys select this area? Of all the areas you could have selected?
Right now, that was the best one for property that we owned and the use of it. We also have different facilities that we own, particularly Salina Country Club, so that would alleviate the need for any food or beverage type of activities out there for an event. We could host people back at the country club in their event space and alleviate any type of need for those types of events.
So that proximity is what played into, played a role. Okay.
Yep.
What can you do to help about the sound barrier?
You know, the fencing is something that has been discussed. We really, at this point, don't see a need for it. It wasn't overwhelming. The residential areas in that area weren't so close to it that we feel like it'd be a burden. On top of that, the time of shoots and the duration of the shoots, it's not an all-day, like if we had a five-hour shoot or an event, it's not something that would be shots for five hours. You know, the nature of the sport is, once the clay goes, and if it hits the ground, it's either shot or not shot, and there's rounds in between. So, the way it's broken up shouldn't really be too intrusive on the neighboring places, especially with the time that we're planning on doing it. Most people are out of their houses, running errands, youth sports, et cetera. So, it's not a major concern of ours. We certainly respect the concern, but based on what we've seen, it's not overwhelming.
I know when I first read through this, I was a little concerned, even for somebody who lives in the county.
Sure.
And my nearest neighbor's a mile and a half away. When somebody shoots a gun in the proximity, in my proximity, it scares the hell out of me.
Sure.
Because I don't know who's shooting, and I don't know what they're shooting at, and I can hear it from over a mile away. So, I'll be honest with you. When I first read this, I thought, I can only feel for the Salina residents who are going to hear these guns going off, and wondering what's going on. How are you going to alleviate that nervousness from the people that live in that area?
Sure. You know, for this, for sporting clays and shooting in general, it all comes down to education. Sporting clays is one of the largest growing sports and the fastest growing sports, especially within our youth. John Starks, the gentleman we have with us here, you know, the first thing they teach is safety. If you shoot, and you shoot clays or trap or anything related to the sport, you are heavily educated on safety before you do anything. It's just like hunting. Most states, including Kansas, require you to go through a hunter's safety course. The area that it's in, if you haven't been back there, you wouldn't even know there was a house there and a garage or anything else. It's very, very secluded with tree lines, including a creek bed that's dry. There's no way to even access it from a different direction other than the drive. So for us, it's more about education. There has been shooting in that area in the past as well. So, again, it's one of those things that we will learn as we go. That's part of the intention with starting with a minimal amount, one, to understand the demand, but also the impact on the community, so we can understand that as well. That's really important to us. And, again, the concerns that were raised are all valid, but for us, safety, safety precautions, education is everything we preach in our organization.
Well, you do realize that in the future, you're going to be surrounded by housing.
Sure. Absolutely. And there are many other courses. Powder Creek's a great one out in Kansas City, that it's also surrounded by residential areas, and those residential areas and housing communities came after the shooting range had already been established.
Right.
I have a quick question about your events. You said you're going to have just a certain number of events per year for the first year. Are they going to be all completely open to the public, or are they going to be private events or a mixture? Do you know exactly what type of events you're going to have scheduled? What are they for specifically?
Sure. It would be a mix of everything. It would be public registration. We do have the club membership that we plan to incorporate into those events. We also have, we've worked with the Boy Scout groups in the past for fundraisers for them, that they've been able to come in and raise money for their troops. Really, it comes down to giving us the option to do a lot more. Again, from an educational standpoint, whether it's a sporting team for a school, or fundraiser for the Boy Scouts, you know, we want to know what's out there. And even just the discussion has, you know, raised people to come out to us. Fort Hayes University was one of the first people that reached out to us and said, we'd come over there to practice if you had something for us. Now, that's not our intention, you know, going from the start, but it's good to know that we have people out there that would support what we're trying to do, whether it's this location or another down the road.
So you think that you have plenty of interest for more than these X number of events going forward, and say, the next subsequent two, three years, then there will be more events happening and more of these?
Yes.
Just gunfire at the location?
Yeah, absolutely. We'd like to grow the sport. We'd like to see what this can do, not just for our organization, but also Salina. I sit on the Salina Chamber of Commerce Board as well, and every month, we talk about how we can bring more sports, more transient business to Salina, in Salina County. So, a lot of people from Salina drive out of Salina to go shoot, whether they're going to Bennington, Russell, et cetera, Kansas City even. That's an every-week thing for a lot of people, and that's missed opportunity for Salina.
How long does an event last?
Depending on how many sessions, three to five hours.
And how many shots would be fired during that three to five hours?
Hmm, that's a good question.
A hundred per person?
Hundred per person. Hundred per person.
And, how many people?
In the course of a five-hour event, it could be up to 140.
Do the math.
Oh, man.
Do the math. Okay, let's start talking about infrastructure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Number one, parking. Number two, septic facilities. You're going to have to have some sort of facilities for people to go to the bathroom. Number three, you're going to have to start talking about some sort of housing to be able to put these people in. So, explain all of this to us.
So, the sessions are intermittently. So they'd be sessions of 40 to 50 people at once. So, one session happens, they leave, the next session comes in.
And that'd be 5,000 shots?
It would be.
They'd come in and shoot 5,000 times?
Roughly at the same time, though.
Okay.
So, it's not going to be 5,000 shots, one, then the next, and the next. It's going to be all, it's relatively the same.
I'm just thinking, okay, the neighborhood, okay, we're going to hear 200 shots? No, we're going to hear 15,000 shots.
We can hear them at our house, and 5,000 would be a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, finish infrastructure, because you're going to have to have an infrastructure for this number of people.
Sure. Well, in terms of restrooms and facilities?
Parking, restrooms and facilities, and housing.
So, parking, we have an acreage right at the front of the lot. It's, right now, it's used for agriculture. Wheat, it'll be planted with something else, a different crop that we can use for parking. And then, from a facility standpoint, the use of porta-potties, two porta-potties would be sufficient for 40 to 50 people in one session. So, again, we're not trying to create an environment for 150 people to socialize for five hours. 40 to 50 people at once get their shots done, regroup at a different location for awards, reception ceremony, whatever the case may be.
Good. Any other questions for the applicant or comments?
I'm backing up to the question that was already asked. What are you going to do to alleviate the fears of the neighbors? Because that, you kind of ran around that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Goes back to education and.
That's what you said before, but you educated everybody that's coming out to shoot.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the people that aren't shooting.
Yeah.
Because, as was already said, I live in the country too, and it's very unnerving when you start hearing the guns pop off.
Sure, absolutely. Well, communication is key. So, set aside education. Communication is key. The use of social media, digital marketing, anything that we can do to build awareness. And when we talked to Father Keith of the cemetery, and I know we're talking more of the residential side, but even his concerns were all cleared up with communication. So, we do have relationships with Salina 311. There's a range of ways we can publicize the notice of events, and then welcome anybody to either participate or publicize anything that has to do with safety concern, et cetera, just to ease the minds of them.
Okay.
You say you're with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, sir.
Have you spoken at all with any of the city officials, specifically those in the planning department, about what you're doing? Because this is their growth area that you're going in.
Not directly. We have a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday morning.
Any other questions, comments from my staff?
I have none.
Okay, I'm going to open up to the floor. Thank you. Don't run off.
Right here.
Public comment.
Hello, Salina. First one, you ought to ask all the people that are veterans. That'll scare the hell out of you when you hear shots. We've been there in combat. We don't need any more of this. Number two, they denied having a shooting range out at the Oliver Hague Ground, the county did. So, you're going to have ground contamination. You're going to have environmental issues. You're going to have toxic shot. Talk to us about them. We don't like it.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have a partner. We own the property that's at the northeast corner of Crawford and Holmes Road, which would be just adjacent to the property that they're wanting to put this on. You know, I was just doing the math here earlier before I came into this, but I think it's going to be the round, the number of rounds that are going to be shot were way more than what I anticipated, because I thought, you know, you'd be around 2,000 to 4,000 for each event, but it sounds like it could be way more than that per event that they have. And they're saying two to four times a month, so, good lord, you know, the number of rounds and the muzzle blasts that are going to happen in that length of time is going to be tremendous. And they go on to say that, you know, two to four events per month with the potential to increase dependent on demand. Well, I think, you know, this is not the appropriate place for a trap range or sporting clays. You know, it's going to have an effect on property values in the area, and it is in the master plans for the city to be residential area. So, you know, I just, I just don't think it's an appropriate place to have it.
Excuse me, Darvin, before you leave, before you leave, do you have any future plans on the development of that area that you're?
Actually, we have all the engineering done to put streets and utilities in when the time is right. We've spent the money to do the engineering on all the streets, utilities, just waiting for the proper time.
So the planning's already, the planning's already in motion?
Well, yeah, but we haven't went to the city with it for quite some time to do anything with it.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Peck, 54 Fairdale Road in Salina. My family also owns Bell Tree Farm at 401 South Holmes Road, and so, that's why I'm here this evening. I'd first like to say that I am certainly in favor of growing the sport, and enjoy shooting clays myself, and have actually been to that facility and enjoyed a fundraiser there one time. I also like pork chops, but wouldn't want a hog farm next to me. And so, what I have observed since we've been there is, first of all, Bell Tree Farm has been there in that location, you know, 30-plus years. It's moved over to the north a little bit, and it's been in that location 20-plus years. Aside from that being a tree farm where we have families come and, you know, enjoy being outside, purchasing Christmas trees, walking through the land, et cetera, that's really limited in terms of a seasonal activity that probably wouldn't conflict all that much with what their plans are. However, you know, if it was our opening day, or opening weekend, or the first two or three weekends that were open, that would really be something to hear 20,000 shots going off while you're out there looking for the perfect Christmas tree. Aside from that, that's also land that we have donkeys and goats on. We take our family dog out there. I garden out there. I have bees out there. It's a place that we go to, that's really relatively close to our home, that we go and enjoy as our ground. And that's, that's kind of an issue for me. I do think it really adversely affects, as Darvin pointed out, not only property values, but the value that I get from it in terms of me and my family. from it in terms of me and my family, friends, neighbors enjoying that ground. Um, let's see. Uh, the other point that Darvin made as well was, uh, right now, they're looking at twelve to sixteen events, but clearly, as stated, uh, by, by their own, uh, application, their hope is to grow that. And so, you know, it starts out with twelve to sixteen events, and maybe it's, you know, thirty events, uh, the next year, and so forth. So, that's troublesome. Uh, it's worrisome to me. Um, the first time I ever heard, uh, any shooting over there, uh, it sounds like a war zone. Um, I had calls from neighbors as far, uh, to the east of the tree farm as Bradley Street, calling to see what we were doing at our tree farm that day. Uh, I got a call from the manager of Schooler saying that his employees were worried what we were doing, and if they were in, uh, you know, if they were safe from, um, from any shots being fired. And so, I was fielding calls that day from probably three to four people, worried about what we were doing, and I had to explain, "This isn't from us." Um, and it was extremely loud. I've been there for subsequent shoots, uh, at that property, and I'm sure wind does play a part in that, but every time I've been on our property, when there's been shooting out there, it has been really, really loud. Um, and I know that I've heard from people, uh, east of us, that it's loud over there as well. So, um, I think that, uh, you know, like I said, I am for growing the sport. I just think there's gotta be a better location for it. Uh, future plans for the city, the growth of Salina is bound to go that way. And I know they, um, uh, I know they mentioned other communities where the shooting ranges were there first. I, I, I don't see development, you know, being healthy next to a shooting range. So, those are my thoughts. Uh, I trust you guys will consider this carefully and appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Sishley, um, gun advocate, enjoy shooting, uh, have grown up that way all my life, um, totally respect the sport and everything associated, um, in its context. And, um, one thing that I would wanna bring up is the city of Lincoln Heights, Ohio. If you've not heard of Lincoln Heights, Ohio, you wanna look it up, it's, uh, several, uh, studies have been done on this community that have had extreme aberrant mental, uh, detrimental effects as a result of a police shooting range that is there, and they haven't been able to move. I'm all for shooting ranges in not urban or areas associated, or local or proximal to, um, families or even elderly communities. I think of, what is the most important thing to someone, uh, as they're aging? Their animal, right? And what is the most stressful thing to a dog or an animal is the sound of thunder and gunshots, and that stresses them out immensely. And what does that do to their owner as a result? By proxy, stresses them out as well. But then you consider youths as well that are exposed to the sound of gunshots. Um, the, um, science says that they are thirteen times, that's thirteen hundred percent, more likely to have mental anxiety issues as a result in their adult life, uh, being exposed to the sound of gunfire. So, me personally, that I can say that I grew up with, you know, guns and everything like that, and, and hunting, and love the sport, and a total advocate, it's just the proximity to, um, residents that have spent their life there, or trying to establish a family and so forth like that, that, uh, the long-term detrimental effects that that will cause to them, both with their families, their children, and any, um, animals as, as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other public comment? Seeing none, I will close it to the public and bring it back to my commissioners for discussion. Fire away.
You have, uh, as you pointed out, it was in the joint, that area around Salina that we use...
Right, that's the suburban residential area, yeah, service area.
Don't we usually, before we do anything, in that area, see what they have to say before we do anything?
That's gonna be one of my questions.
Yeah, uh, I, uh, inquired with zoning at that time, and they said that, uh, um, the end, uh, their director, uh, had told me that they may have to do an amendment to the comprehensive plan, but they didn't know. So, it's, it's one of those things they may have to, you know, but that's, that's it, you know, but it's, but they told me, they said that it's, other than that, they said they don't, nothing else came up from them.
This one has me torn, because as big a gun advocate as I am, I, this is a residential area.
Two miles away, you're gonna hear fifteen thousand shots.
Yeah.
And so, I say, "If you move it out in the country two miles, you're still gonna hear fifteen thousand shots."
As Aaron said, they heard it on Bradley. Well, that's where we are, not on Bradley, but in that neighborhood, and we hear it. And I can't imagine being in places that are closer. I do shoot. I have shot trap. My husband, as most of you know, is a huge hunter and gun advocate, but...
I think it's a great idea.
It is a great idea, but I think it needs to be rural, and this is not...
I don't think we control the noise that close to city limits.
It's within an area that needs to be protected.
The retirement home, which I didn't even think about.
There's two of them.
It's a nursing home.
You got Presbyterian manor, and you got all the...
Yeah, but I mean, the point is...
Well, within distance of hearing fifteen thousand shots.
If I can hear it, and we're two blocks past Holiday Resort, if I can hear it, they can.
Oh, God.
Good idea, tough location.
I just don't like the location.
Yeah. Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we deny the request.
I'll second that.
Can you complete your statement? Make the motion correctly.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we...
That's the correct way you would...
That's what he wanted. That's all he wanted.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the request for application, I can't find it.
Twenty-four dash oh-two.
Twenty-four dash oh-two.
Based on any particular factor or...
Because of the discussions that we've had, the proximity to the city.
We need to have some specific items that are, you know, based on proximity to the resident center noise.
Based on the proximity, based on the fact that it's in the urban service area.
Thank you.
Number one.
Okay.
And it's in the area that's...
Reasons why we are, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ken.
See, he is awake.
Yeah.
I forgot he was there.
And I will second that.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that we deny conditional use permit twenty-four dash oh-two, based on findings of it being within the urban service area and the proximity to Salina. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I will entertain a vote. All those in favor of denying the conditional use permit, raise your right hand. All those against, the motion carries unanimously, the conditional use permit twenty-four oh-two has been denied.
And I want to point out to the applicants that they can, uh, you have fourteen days if you want to appeal to the county commissioners for, uh, you know, and, uh, but, uh, like I say, that would be probably the first meeting after fourteen days from today. So, um, that's, you have that option, um, and the public would then have the option also to submit a petition. Uh, and what happens is, the county commission, once the public submits their petition, that's, uh, signed by twenty percent of the, uh, residents that are within that notification area, then they, uh, uh, the county commission would have to approve this request by a super majority, uh, rather than a simple majority. So, it would be four of the five members would have to approve it versus a simple majority of three out of five. So, um, that's for the county commissioners if you decide to, uh, appeal it to them, so.
Okay, we will move on. Next item of the agenda is discussion of the twenty-four oh-one awful, possible inclusion of provisions of battery energy storage systems in the zoning regulations. This is strictly a discussion. Staff?
Correct. Uh, I have included with you all some information that was, uh, forwarded to me by, uh, Commissioner Fennel, and, uh, on, uh, the, uh, energy storage, uh, leading on, uh, on safety, that, that document, as well as utility scale, battery energy storage systems model ordinance. Um, and so, um, I know you just got these probably unless, uh, I can't remember if, you, did you, 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 when you emailed me, did you email it to everybody too?
No, I did not. Didn't have everybody's email. You did, though, didn't you? Hannah did.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, okay.
So, they've, they've all had it.
So, you've got it, okay. So, uh, I guess, you know, whatever you all want to do as far as starting, you know, going through that, you know, this is kind of, if you wanna go, uh, start the discussion there, or if you want to, uh...
No, I'll start it. I sent that information to you guys, just to clear up some of the stuff that I had heard from last summer. And, um, there was so many myths and misstatements that I heard. I wanted to make sure that we got some information from a third-party source, not the industry, not a landowner, but a third-party source that give us good information on what does and what doesn't happen with these things. And, uh, of course, that fell in line with the model ordinance, which, if you guys read this, refers everything back to the national standards, which I really liked, because that takes a burden off of us.
We need that.
We needed that. So, we've got, uh, a good statement there that says, "You have to meet these NFPA requirements in order to put something in." Takes our burden, takes a burden off of us, puts it on the national fire protection. So...
Any other comments within the commission? Seeing none, I'll open it up for any public discussion. Five minutes limited in your talk. Anyone like to make any comments? Seeing none, I will close the public...
Oh, yes. Uh, okay.
It's me again, Mark Sishley, sorry. Um, uh, Mr. Fennel, the national, uh, guidelines for that, do they make, take into consideration the fact that Kansas is known for tornado activity?
They, I know they cover earthquake. I didn't see specifically tornado.
Okay.
That's a good point to bring up.
Yeah, 'cause with tornado activity, there's things called projectiles that are accelerated at great speed. And when you penetrate these types of batteries, we know exactly what they do. They have, as stated by the expert in the last meeting I was in, a exothermic reaction, I think was the quote, but we know that that's an intense exothermic reaction. We also know that volcanoes are exothermic reactions. And when we talk about the proximity of multiple power cells to an intense exothermic reaction, and the inability to abate that effectively, and the toxicity of the off-gassing of those exothermic reactions by just a simple penetration, no spark, no igniter, no anything other than a penetrating, uh, event, which can be facilitated by a tornado, which we have on occasion here in Kansas, um, that is proximal to a school in very close range, um, depending on the wind conditions, that can be very aberrant to the health of those children and the community members surrounding that. So, I wanna make that, um, my, um, presentation for objection.
Have you read any documentation that supports your claim of off-gassing?
Yes.
What is it?
Do I, do I have the spif- excuse me, specifics? Know that the journal or, um...
Because the document that we've printed out disputes your claim, and that's the reason why I'm asking. That's the only reason why I'm asking.
I, I don't have that specific one. I could get it to you. Um, I would say this for a fact, I know of no plant, person on the planet earth that would breathe those gases that are coming off a lithium ion battery. They put those in a contained unit in a vacuum chamber that's well-ventilated and filtered and away from all researchers when they do the testing of this, because no firefighter will go in without proper ventilation or oxygen as well into such fire, or get even close proximity. They usually let them burn out and hope that the winds are strong enough to disperse the chemicals that are coming off of such fire. So, um, but I will try to find studies for you to quote exactly the toxicity of it.
Because everything that I have read so, so far has not supported your claim, and that's the reason why I wanna see it.
What they, what the, the industry is relying on is dispersment and, um, the things to be able to dissolve. And they're talking about probably one battery event dispersing in a very large area. So, we're talking about a drop of dye being dropped into Lake Erie, for example. It's not gonna change the color, right? Because you have that amount of ability to disperse those toxic gases.
The fact that was stated here says, "During a fire at the Tesla Megapack at Moss Landing in California, air quality testing showed no hazards to human health."
Yeah, but the, we talk about what proximity and distance they took those testings from. They didn't take the conditions, they didn't take the relative humidity, and how well that that would stay at certain altitudes, or if it would go up into the atmosphere. We know that those conditions change all the time. So, these are very limited. You have to look at the context of those studies.
Please provide your documentation, so that we have something to go on.
Okay, so, you, would you like documentation specifically that would say, "Will you have an aberrant health event if you were within a few feet of breathing the off-gassing of a burning lithium ion battery?" Is that what, would we say, say?
Essentially, yeah, because I don't wanna go by hearsay. I've been reading and, and trying to understand all of this.
Right, yeah.
And I've been looking at specific documentation.
Yeah, that's the problem, is this, the docu- the studies that are done are done by the industry that produce the batteries, not by the EPA.
I will say, I wanna interject here, speaking of the, the Moss Landing incident. And, um, there was, following the incident, um, they did take air samples that were coordinated by Monterey County Environmental Health Division, and conducted by the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, and indicated that there was no threat to human health or the surrounding environment as a result of the fire. That's just a report that was done by the air sampling from the county Environmental Health Division and the EPA.
So, we're getting down to the point where you can make claims, but make sure you have the claims backed up that we can go back and research on.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I would just look at the Saline County Fire Department when you want to burn, and the ban they have on burning of certain items. They don't let you burn treated lumber, they don't let you burn tires, they don't let you burn, um, paint, for example, but lithium ion batteries are okay to burn, and that's not toxic, you know? I mean, that's what I, I, I absolutely understand, I'm just inter...
We've read in documentation and research.
Right.
The more information you can provide us, the more informed we can be.
Yeah, absolutely. Knowledge is power, yes.
Because that's really what we're after, is an informed decision.
Yeah, and that's what's unfortunate in our society today, is that we know with every fiber of science, we don't have to prove that gravity is right just to walk off the side of a building, but now, because somebody wants to come, you know, uh, have a gravity event that is, uh, toxic to us, we have to prove now that gravity actually exists. I mean, that's what is unfortunate.
Keep, keep in mind, there has been a massive amount of research on this, a massive amount. You go to Google Scholar, and you will see a massive amount of research on this already. And all we're trying to do is, if somebody makes the claim like that, it con- that disputes what we've been reading, let us know. That's all I'm asking. Just let me know where you found that, so I can read it.
Yeah, and it's the context as well, too, and that's where you have to, that does take a tremendous amount of time to dig in and... take a tremendous amount of time to dig in and look at the abstract, what they present versus what is actually being studied. And that happens all the time in scientific research. I mean, Mark Twain said it best, there are two ways to lie, right? Statistics and statistics, you know? Um, so, uh, all right. Thank you. I'll, I'll try to find that and provide it for you guys.
Send it to him. He'll make sure we all get a copy of it.
And that is Tim Halman.
On that, related to that too, you know, we need the, the chemistry. Let's look at the chemistry. What is it telling us?
And he makes a good comment as far as, we're all right now, to me, we're focused in on one spot. There's nothing saying that this couldn't pop up three or four other places in the county. Everybody wants to talk about, we talked about one happening in this one spot. They may decide they wanna come to Western Sleen County. They may wanna go to Southern Sleen County.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Right, right. So, you know, we're talking about, oh, we're worried about, you know, this and this and this. Well, that's that one spot. We gotta deal with the whole county of how it could affect.
If you look at page sixteen of eighteen of this Douglas County, it does say testing for meteorological impact is one of the things that they require.
Yeah, so.
So your information would certainly add to that.
Appreciate it.
And keep, and, and you bring up a good point because what we, we did the same thing in solar. We made sure that we had all the testing done beforehand for baseline testing so that we knew that was what we had to work off of. So.
And the best part about it is we got national regulations.
That's the best.
We cannot make them any easier. No. We gotta start with that. So anyway, all right. Comments?
Norman, Mano Salina, do any of you gentlemen and you ladies up there know who Greta Thunberg is?
Just make your comments.
She's an envi- environmental activist. Stop shitting on my planet.
She made that statement worldwide.
I'm thrilled for her. Any other comments?
Teresa Swisher, forty-eight fifty-three East McReynolds Road. And I went through a checklist, but it was the wrong one that, so I do have the one that you guys are working with, and I appreciate that. Um, so I went through it this evening and the Department of Energy also has a, uh, checklist for battery energy storage that you could use. I went through it, picked out some things that, um, I didn't think were, were covered here specifically that I'd like to just point out. Um, so under the Department of Energy's, uh, checklist, uh, one point one nine, it says the contractor shall provide and install all safety systems as required. I'll go on and on, per NFPA. This includes but is not limited to explosion control systems.
Excuse me, Teresa. Which NFPA are you looking at on that one?
Eight fifty-five, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Eight fifty-five NFPA.
Uh, this includes but is not limited to explosion control systems, fire, smoke, and gas detection systems and fire suppression systems were applicable. And I think that based on where it's gonna be, the fact that it could take a storm or a whatever, we, we need to think about making it as safe as we can.
Sure.
Um, one point three, it lists all the, um, government standards, and I think most of them are covered here, but I think we need to take a look and try to compare the two and make sure that we haven't missed any. Um, one seven, sorry. Uh, it talks about the local authority having jurisdiction involvement. Um, and it, it talks a lot, that, that's mostly about the contractor having an emergency plan and that everybody who needs to know it has that plan and, or a copy of it. And that it is, it covers everything.
I don't remember which NFPA I was reading, but it's one that's been cited in here that specifically addresses the training for volunteer fire departments and fire departments within the area, which I think is, like you, extremely critical.
Extremely. I just want to be sure that we don't miss, I'm just trying to give you some references on things that I think you need to also look at. Um, section two one, it talks about their engineering and construction, uh, having, um, licensed engineers doing all the studies and stamping the documents, uh, making sure they're all compliant with all of the documents. Who, who are we gonna have, this is, this is not up here. Um, who's gonna be responsible for making sure that they are following all these rules and regs?
Well, there's gonna be multiple people. Number one, FERC is gonna be responsible.
It won't be a local, it'll be a-
Yeah, it's not gonna be up to us because FERC is not gonna allow them on the grid if they don't meet their requirements.
Okay, okay. That, that's one of the things that in going through this, I thought, and, and obviously we're not gonna be paying for the cost to have that done either. Um, and then two eleven, but I, I, I think this Department of Energy, um, checklist is also, I, I would recommend you highly take a look at it. Um, and I think the other thing, I'm not sure this one covered was how far, uh, from a residence is, are we going to allow these?
That's an eight fifty-five.
Okay, that's what I wondered, if it was an eight fifty-five. Um, and I didn't see anything about if ownership changes on the applicant. The other two that I have-
Ownership as to who?
So say Plus Power sells it to ABC Company.
Oh, okay.
Um, the other one that I looked at, uh, and I'll, I'll give you guys that information, uh, talks about the things you should, should make for sure this new company is doing before you agree to let them sell it. Um, and I, I thought that was, that was a good thing. I don't-
I don't know if we'll have that kind of authority.
We will.
We won't have any type of authority in that.
If, if you could, I think one of the things though that you, you, we could do is as a requirement of approval or if, if it were to ever be approved, they would have to, um, basically record where, if the conditional use permit is approved, has to be recorded at the register of deeds office and applied to the, the deed of the property that it's gonna be located on. And therefore, all the conditions, everything that's part of the, the conditional use permit would be on there and attached to the, the, the actual deed of the park.
Sure, that's in the minutes, please.
Yeah. Cause so much of that'll be beyond our-
Yeah. But once again, I think it's something that we need to, to at least talk about and think about before we-
Definitely.
Sign off on this.
It's, just before you leave, specifically which EPA document were you using? Because I've looked at several.
Oh, um, it, I, I Google searched, I had it, and, um, DOE best checklist-
Okay.
Is what I Google searched.
Would you mind sending that link to Tim so he, we get a copy of it, please?
Yeah, I could do that. Got it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? It's just strictly for discussion.
Gary McClure, corner of Homes and Mentor, just about, uh, two miles from the previously proposed area. I know you're looking at a lot more consideration for the entire county. But I just wanted to make a reference to, uh, Mark's previous comments. You know, that Monterey twenty-twenty-two mishap, that's in an area where you have wind speeds that are typical of about three to ten miles an hour. In the past year, I've had the shingles blown off my roof. I've had trees blown down. And I think we could be looking at the potential of, you know, not just having a vent that was improperly installed, but a vent totally blown off and a couple times a year. And that's really all I have to say about that. Just another consideration that I'd just like to bring before you.
That's just a breeze in Kansas, right?
Well, that's where the testing for meteorological impact comes in.
It's gotta go. They don't pray of tornadoes in that site, do they? Other public comment? Strictly discussion. If not, I'll close the public part of the discussions. Staff, anything else?
Uh, nothing more. Uh, just, uh, if we, currently we, uh, you know, like I say, if a lot of the, I think the more information that you, you guys can have in front of you, I think the better off it will be. Uh, it'll be similar to what, you know, we, you know, hopefully come to the same conclusion on this as we did with the, uh, the solar as well, so.
I do wanna look into the tornado issue. I'm gonna search on that one and make sure that we've actually got documentation, research on that.
With that, I'm gonna entertain a motion for adjournment. Quickly.
We jumped on it all at once, didn't we?
I'm leaving. Motion adjourn-
You guys stay, I'm leaving.